Oh, I know what I was gonna tell you. I got more food added back in.
I wish I could show you my screen outside is beautiful.
To my list of allowed.
So what's the temperature now?
I can eat potatoes now. And rice. So that's huge, cuz I was like never getting full on anything.
Very nice.
All the starches.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, Robin.
Well, it's gonna rain here. Hi, Robin. It's gonna rain here tomorrow, so.
Not here.
Nope.
Who ordered the rain?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
I need you to have some cloudiness for some reason, or I don't know why.
Oh, I thought it was more like watering your lawn or something like that.
Oh, no. I don't have a lawn. I'm good. I have no lawn.
Oh, okay.
Where Bob and I live, there's very few lawns.
I'm gonna unmute us from here.
Well, that is true. Bob doesn't have a lawn.
Nope. I have a raised planar bed. Yep, I have a raised planar bed and have a side yard in the backyard that has had some gravel down on it, and always got some wood chips on it, so we're good.
Hey, the mayor needs that. She's got a big yard.
Yeah.
She needs all that rain for her green grass.
There you go.
Well, that's what it is.
All right, I think we're at five thirty, Sean. Is that correct?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June eighth, twenty twenty City Council Study Session. For the Governor's Virtual Proclamation, we are continuing to hold these meetings virtually and telephonically, and that will continue for a period of time. Council, we have a very full agenda tonight, so a couple of requests here. One, I would like to ask everybody to please hold your questions or comments until after the presentations that are being made tonight are completed, and then also remember to raise your hand so you can be properly recognized for the meetings. And Sean, with that, would you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown.
Deputy Mayor, I believe that Councilmember Brown had notified both of us that he will either be late or not in attendance this evening.
Okay, yeah, I don't recall seeing that, so for now, we will excuse him.
Councilmember J-Rod.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trent Manuel.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Any announcements, reports, or presentations on what we have on the agenda?
No chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll move directly right into our agenda items for tonight, and the first item on our agenda is the Use of Force, Commendations, Inquiries, and Allegations update with Chief O'Neill, and I believe we have Commander Stalker who's gonna do the presentation.
Yes, thank you very much for having me. I'm going to try and share my screen here now. Now, where is it now? Of course, it's not coming up now on on, too.
Down at the bottom?
Yeah, I've got the application open, but it's not showing.
The green Share Screen button?
Right, no, I've got it there, but the application won't come up like it did earlier. Oh, that's wonderful. Well, it worked earlier when I was testing it. I can't get the presentation to show up in the application part, Sean.
Okay, so do you have it saved on the E-Drive?
Um, no.
Okay, can you save it real quick? Sorry about this, everybody. So Steve, try one more time the green button at the bottom that says Share Screen.
Oh, no, I'm in the Share Screen window, but the.
Yeah, but we're not getting that, so can you click on it so we're not showing?
No, I know. I know, but when I'm in the application window, my PowerPoint is not showing up in the application window, even though I have it open.
Say just hits the screen, like Screen One.
Hit Screen One on your Share Screen? And then can you share either of your screens, any of your screens? Is it giving you any of those?
Yeah, I mean, well.
And then we can drag it over to that screen. There we go.
No, that's not what I.
So now drag your PowerPoint onto the screen where the where the calendar notice is.
No, it's not working.
Okay, um.
Put it on the E-Drive and I'll do it.
Yeah.
So if you can put the.
I don't know why it's not showing up.
Okay, if you can put that on the E-Drive, so E-A agenda. And just drop it into the twenty twenty agendas folder. Just at the bottom, and we'll throw it on ours, and you also need to tell us when to when to advance the slide.
Yep.
He closed it.
It's in there. City Council PowerPoint.
So E-A agenda twenty twenty agendas?
No, I just put it in the agenda folder.
Okay, right there. I see it. Yep, so down three.
Uh, sorry? This one?
That, yep.
Sorry.
I'll tell you when we're ready. Steve, one second. Okay, go ahead and start your presentation. You'll just need to let me know when we need to advance the screen.
Okay, hang on.
Okay, I cannot see it now.
Yep, it'll run away. One second.
I can't get out of the Share Screen thing now.
There we go.
Okay, there we go.
So just, Steve, when you're ready for us to advance the slide, just let us know.
Okay, so yes, sorry about that. Thank you for having me tonight. This is the CIA and Use of Force Analysis from twenty nineteen. Go ahead and change slides. So this very first slide just kinda shows a difference in our CAD incidents, case reports, arrests, bookings, infractions, citations from twenty eighteen, and as you can see, we had a decrease in all areas there for various reasons. I don't know why there would be that much of a decrease. We could guess, but you know, we really haven't delved into that. Go ahead and change. For the first slide, we have is commendations, and so our commendations, we had ninety-three total commendations for twenty nineteen. Most of those, what we define as a commendation is any kind of a something that we get from a citizen or from a detective or from another city employee that might commend one of our officers for their professionalism or just the work that they did on a call or on a case. And so anytime we get something like that, we put it in our system as a commendation. Now, we do have some other commendations that are at higher level, a letter of commendation, which we had ten of those in twenty nineteen. We also have a Medal of Distinction. We did not have any of those. We had eleven lifesaving medals that we gave out, and we had four Medal of Merits that we gave out. A merit medal is pretty much when an officer or officers go to a scene that is very dangerous and they use very good tactics to resolve the scene, they may get a Medal of Merit. So go ahead. My next slide talks about internal investigations. Our internal investigation system, usually when something is gonna go to the level of an internal investigation, it's the allegation is usually maybe a serious allegation. It might be a use of force complaint or a bias-based policing allegation, called arrest, or maybe someone who is lying. It could be a various, it could be that an officer maybe has had this allegation multiple times, and so we investigate it as an internal investigation. In twenty nineteen, we had eighteen internal investigations. Eleven of the investigations resulted in misconduct. We had thirteen separate employees that had a misconduct against them during an internal investigation. And I just wanna point out that, you know, kind of as I go through the slides here, I put the CAD incidents in a lot of the slides because I think what that really high illustrates is that eighty-six thousand and sixty-two CAD incidents in twenty nineteen. So that many calls and contacts that our officers had, lots of times, I think what you're gonna see throughout the presentation is that our numbers are really low in some of these areas based on the amount of contacts that we have, and we're actually proud of that because of the work and professionalism that our officers do. So go ahead, next slide. So supervisory inquiries. These are kind of, if we get a complaint on an officer of service delivery or customer service, or these can still be policy violations. We investigate them. Some of them is policy violations, but they maybe weren't considered serious policy violations, or they had mitigating circumstances. And in twenty nineteen, we had eleven official inquiries. Seven of them were unacceptable performance. Twelve employees were involved, and there were six employees that had unacceptable performance attached to them. Okay, next slide. So on this slide here, we just kinda listed all of the different allegations that were noted in our software system based on inquiries and internal investigations. So I'm not gonna sit here and read through all of them, but you can look at them. A violation of general policy is if something didn't fall within one of the other kinda main categories that was categorized as just a violation of general policy. So what you'll see, too, is you'll see the column of misconduct and no misconduct and acceptable performance is obviously the inquiries and internals combined. On the far right side, where you see no conclusion, that was an internal investigation where the employee resigned before there was a finding to the investigation. So we titled that a no conclusion, and we did have that in twenty nineteen. Next slide. Twenty nineteen, we had nineteen collisions. Fourteen of them were preventable. You can see that from twenty seventeen, we went from forty-one collisions all the way down to nineteen by twenty nineteen, which is pretty good. I think, I get questions on that slide, and one thing that I think that we think maybe why that is decreased like that is around twenty seventeen is when we started getting the X-Force, and officers, I think, were still getting used to the difference between driving a car and driving an Explorer with the equipment in the car. So a lot of the accidents were backing accidents, and so in the last two years, they've really decreased, which is a good thing. Next slide. So this is just for collisions. Out of those fourteen collisions, thirteen of them were coaching and counseling. One collision resulted in a written reprimand. So what that tells us is that all of our collisions were very minor collisions. Most of them were just, were officers colliding maybe with an object, a tree, or a cement barrier somewhere, or even sometimes our officers accidentally clip another patrol car in our own parking lot. Next slide. So this slide here is just our combined discipline. Of all the internals, investigations, inquiries, and collisions in twenty nineteen, twenty-eight of them resulted in coaching and counseling, and there were four written reprimands, one suspension, one demotion, and then the no conclusion that occurred on two of the investigations. So what that tells me there when I see that is that out of all of these allegations and complaints that were unacceptable performance or misconduct, it was maybe an officer, it was maybe their first time that they had an allegation against them, or there were mitigating circumstances and they weren't serious allegations, and that's why there's a lot of coaching and counseling rather than more serious discipline. Next slide. So when we're talking about our use of force, in twenty nineteen, we had two hundred and fourteen use of force reports. Out of the two hundred and fourteen force reports, we had three use of force complaints, and out of those complaints, they were all three investigated thoroughly, and they were not sustained. The officer was deemed to be within policy and was within his right to use force in that particular instance. Next slide. So on this slide here, you can see the different force types that we have in our system that officers can use. When they're filling out their force report, they get a drop-down box, and they do the best that they can based on the force that they use. They select it. Now, in one force report, an officer may use more than one force type. What you will see here, obviously, is that, you know, takedown is the number-one force type that our officers use. Other is high, and then another force type that we use is VNR, which is vascular neck restraint, which we had fifty-one applications of that. And so you can look at the different ones there and see, you know, how many times each one of those was used during, in twenty nineteen. And then on the next slide, we get a chance to see on those force types whether they were effective or not effective, and as you can imagine, the verbal is not effective most of the time. That's always usually. Usually, you know, our officers go to verbal first, and they try and de-escalate and talk to the subject. And usually, if it goes to another, you know, type of force, it's because the verbal part of it broke down. And so takedown is very effective, or the vascular neck restraint technique that our officers use is a very effective use of force for us. And it's actually a rather low-level use of force and is very effective and results in minimal injury. And so that one is very effective for us, and so you can see there on other types of force whether or not they're effective or not effective. Next slide. This slide just shows the injuries from force that gets used, and out of the two hundred and fourteen reports, eighty-four individuals that we classify as suspects were injured, and thirty-one officers were injured. I will say, though, out of all of the injuries to the officers and then to the suspects that we contacted, all of the injuries were fairly minor. I don't recall any serious injuries coming out of any of the uses of force on most of them. Next slide. So here you can just see kind of the time of day when the force occurs, and really, this slide is pretty self-explanatory, I think. It's very consistent from year to year, while most of the force application mature, and most of them are in evening time. You know, we have a little spike there around twelve PM, one PM. I'm not sure why, but most of them are very consistently up around that ten PM to oh-two-hundred timeframe. Next slide. This is what's different reasons for the force, and kinda like the type of force that the officer uses. The officer sometimes will list multiple reasons for the force, depending on what the subject is doing, what kind of resistance that they are getting. And as you can see, the muscular tension and a subject pulling away from us is by far every year the number-one reason that we end up using force, and then that's where I think, you know, lots of times, the VNR or the tackle comes into play as far as the type of force that the officer uses. Next slide. And that's the end of the presentation there, so I'm looking for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Commander Stalker, for the report, and I've got a couple of questions before I ask Council to chime in. One, I think it's important to note on your force reports, and there was a footnote that we have here that shows only point-two-six percent of contacts resulted in the use of force. So basically, one quarter of one percent, so that's very, very low, and to to speak myself, that's something I would highly regard for the work our officers do in the city of Auburn. That's excellent. Question on the LVNR. We've seen a lot of reports in the news recently. We've seen some police agencies in some areas of the country that stop the use of that. I believe that's more commonly known as the sleeper hold. It is the third-highest use in our force types that we see here in Auburn. A question I have with that is, the training the officers receive on that tactic, is this a one-time training, or is there a regular training that goes on to update them as the technique is used?
Yeah, that's a good question. It is not a one-time training. The officers go through an initial certification with the VNR, and you're right, it did used to be called lateral vascular neck restraint. We've now moved to, it's changed a little bit to vascular neck restraint, so it's a little bit different. And then annually, the officers are trained on VNR and recertify on it. And you're right, it is a you know, some people call it a chokehold, and it's not a chokehold. It is the vascular neck restraint. It is a very successful use of force for us. Without that technique for us, we would end up having to go to other techniques, which would probably result in more injuries to the officer and to the individuals that we're using force on. And so, yeah, they do get trained, and they have to be certified, and they cannot be expired. If an officer's expired on the VNR, then they cannot use it on the street.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Malanga has a question.
Another question I have is, Councilmember Malanga, go ahead, Councilmember Malanga, I'll chime in after you're done.
Yes, thank you. On your use of force chart, there is a category for other, and it was quite high. What constitutes other?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. I was looking at that myself, and I always try and define it myself. Basically, if all the other ones that are down there, if the officer feels like they used something other than one of the other ones down there, and they can't seem to get specific with it, then they'll use other. Now, that could be you know, various things. That could be a, you know, if the person was starting to resist, maybe the officer had to, you know, bend to the person over the hood of their patrol car in order to gain compliance. So it's hard for me right off the top of my head to come up with different examples, but if an officer doesn't seem to find one of the dropdowns, then they use other.
Councilmember J-Rod has a question.
Councilmember J-Rod. You're muted, Councilmember.
Okay, there we go. Steve, thank you very much for the presentation. Seems like there's a lot of work and time went into this. My question is, what is muscular tension pulled away?
Well, I mean, I think basically, you know, a lot of the times, it's gonna be that the officer has maybe gotten to a point where the person is now under arrest, or they have a reason to go hands-on with the person, and they may grab that person's arm to try and get him in a little armbar, try and get him under control. They've told them maybe that they're under arrest, and so they go to handcuff him, and lots of times, what happens, a lot of suspects will tense up and start to pull away. And so at that point, the officer sometimes will need to use a technique to get that person under control, whether it's a technique to push him up next to a wall, or use a technique to get him onto the ground to get them under control.
Councilmember Sterns has a question.
Councilmember Sterns.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for the report. I have also a question to follow up on Councilmember Malanga's question. Where does lethal use of force fall on this? I didn't see any reports of that, but there were two lethal use of force incidents last year, including E.J. Strickland's. So if you could fill us on where those are on your report?
Well, I don't go into any detail on those incidents. And so if you look under the force types, you will see the word firearm, and there's two.
Okay, that doesn't say, because it wouldn't necessarily be lethal from a firearm. It could be lethal from a, you know, a citadel.
Could be.
All right, so I'm just looking why we don't have that listed.
Why we don't have anything specific about a use of force that resulted in a death?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's not something that I typically put in the report. We haven't in the past. You know, those are pretty sensitive issues. One of them is still pending as far as the review goes, and both of them are still pending as far as anything to do with King County, and so, you know, we didn't put anything specific on those incidences. And as you see through the report, there's really nothing specific on any of the use of force incidences pro-level up to lethal force. So this report is more, a little bit more generic in that sense, a little bit more vague in that sense.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember J-Rod has another question.
Councilmember J-Rod.
Yeah, thank you. One more, a couple of questions I had was going back into thirteen with employee misconduct. What kind of misconduct are we talking about, and are they still employed with with our department?
Yeah, so when you look at the allegations slide, which talks about the different allegations, I didn't make any notes on you know, all the internal investigations that were done. I don't have them all memorized, but you can imagine you have a no conclusion next to the alcohol violation against the dishonesty and the improper evidence handling, and those are no conclusions because those employees resigned prior to the findings. So there is an employee there that is not here anymore that resulted in more than one internal investigation during twenty nineteen. I believe it was just the one employee in twenty nineteen that was resigned during an internal investigation.
Okay, and then one other question was investigation with misconduct. What does that mean?
Well, so what we do is, so let's say there's an allegation of improper evidence handling or a pursuit policy violation. And I'll just add, if I may, real quick, too, that a lot of the allegations or investigations, some of them start, quite a few of them actually start from internally, not because someone from outside the department made a complaint. So like pursuit violations, for instance, there were seven of them. Lots of times, the officer, you know, we watch those videos, we review them, and we make a determination internally that that officer violated policy, and we'll start an internal investigation. So if I do the investigation, I gather as much information as I can. I interview all the officers involved, and once the investigation's completed, it goes to a three-panel review board. That review board looks at everything, all the statements, evidence, videos, pictures, anything that we have, and they make a determination based on the allegations and possible policy violations of whether or not it was misconduct or no misconduct. So if there is misconduct, then it still gets talked about more, whether or not there's going to be discipline or not, and some of that depends on the the officer's history and the seriousness of the allegations.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Steve?
Mayor Backus has a question?
Thank you. As far as the question, Councilmember Sterns on the two officer-involved shootings from last year, while it did show up as firearms, I think we might be able to do a better job in the future of outlining, hopefully there aren't any, but we can do a better job of explaining that in these reports. I don't believe Commander Stalker was wrong, but I think we can do a better job of providing some of that information.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Councilmember Sterns.
Commander, can I go back to the, well, let me find it, the slides you have on the various force types? And so what I'm wondering is if you could explain whether you have a use of force continuum? If there's an Auburn Police Department policy on that? And if you have, if you could provide us with an explanation of when you escalate from one force type to the next? What are the conditions for that?
Well, look, I'm not, that's a hard question to answer. To answer your first question, you do not have a use of force continuum in policy. A use of force continuums kind of went away a while ago. They're not effective. And so really, really the bottom line is, is we're talking about a use of force based on the resistance that the officer is receiving at the time. And so we go through lots of training on that. And so, you know, we all know that things start out verbally. It might start out very low level, trying to take a person into custody. And then based on the resistance we're getting, then the officer can move to whatever type of force they believe is reasonable at the time in order to fight off that resistance. And as we know, you know, we're talking about incidents that are dynamic on the street, occurring second after second. That resistance can change from low level to high level very fast. So it's really hard for me to sit here and say exactly all the different types of resistance. But our officers go through so much training and they're very well-trained, you know, at being able to use the right type of technique and force based on the resistance that they're receiving at the time.
So you're saying there's no policy then? It's really just 100% up to the officer's discretion as to what type of force? I mean, how would you review that? How would that be reviewed?
No, we definitely have a use of force policy and there's also state law RCW. What we don't have is a use of force continuum. That used to be something that was in policy years ago that a lot of people used around the country, but the force continuums are not really valid anymore. And so it's more of what's reasonable based on the circumstances and based in the officer's mind at the time of the incident.
Okay, would you be able to just share the policies that you do have them with us?
I can definitely get you a copy of our use of force policy.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Councilmember Trout Manuel has a question?
Councilmember Trout.
Thank you. I've been trying to raise my hand for a while. Anyway, this question is for Commander Stalker. Thank you for coming and sharing your statistics. I have two questions. I know throughout the area, there have been women that have suffered from excessive force by police. What new practices are you considering to make sure it doesn't happen here to the women of Auburn? Also, what policies, and I'm glad that Councilmember Stern brought up the policies, because I want to know what policies are you going to change or add to correct with disescalating and excessive force that police are using today? And my reasons for asking is because I have knowledge that this has happened in Auburn. And I just want you to answer.
First question, so, you know, not whether it's female, male, whether or not the gender or race, our officers are very well-trained. You know, every contact that they do, they do everything that they can to de-escalate the situation. And unfortunately, sometimes it ends up going to a type of force. The officer does the best that they can to get that situation under control with the, you know, with the least amount of force as possible. As far as policies, I'm not sure what you're asking. We are looking at several of our policies right now, including our complaint policy and allegation and discipline policy. We are looking, I think, at some potential changes in the use of force policy that maybe has to do with de-escalation. But as far as our use of force policy goes, it's, you know, I believe it's a good policy. And I'm not sure if I'm answering your question fully.
Are police officers trained also, the enforcement with women, to use the, you know, the force? What type of force and how much force that they're using on the women? Do they have training on that?
Yeah, I mean, again, regardless of the gender, you got to look at, the officers are trained to use force based on the resistance and based on the situation at the time. And so whether or not it's a female or a male, you may have an officer who's very stout or strong and it might be someone else who's not very big. And, you know, that officer might not use the same type of force on someone that's smaller than them as they might if they're coming up against somebody who's much larger than them, female or male. And so, you know, I think our officers do a really good job at using the amount of force that is necessary. And I will point out that, as I did in the presentation, we only had three allegations of force or complaints of force in 2019 and they were, they are not sustained. And so I think our officers do a really good job at doing a good job with their force.
Okay, I would like to set up a meeting to meet with you and Chief O'Neill at a later time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baggett has a question?
Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you. Steve, I'm not sure how much information you have on this, but do we have a dashboard or some kind of a way of looking at where we are currently? I know that we're, you know, into the sixth month following the end of the year. And I was hoping that maybe we might have some more current information available. Do we only do this once a year or do we do it periodically during the year?
Yeah, just once a year right now, but these are, some of these reports are reports that I can pull out pretty quick. And so if we would like to see maybe something more often, I can pull out reports and get a quarterly or something twice a year if you would like.
Yeah, an update like that would be handy, I think, to kind of show the trends and things of that nature. Just be helpful for us to see it rather than have us get it all at one time at the end of the year. Perhaps there might be something that could be done or brought to attention of others who are in command that if there is some correction that might be necessary. Thank you.
Councilmember Malanga has a question?
Yeah.
Councilmember Malanga.
Yes, thank you. Commander, you mentioned that when they're reviewing violations, there's three people that review that. Are these other officers that are reviewing or are these community members that are reviewing? Who are those three folks that are reviewing violations?
They are officers within the department. They are always officers that are at a higher rank. So if it's a patrol officer that was investigated, then it's going to be commanders and/or sergeants that will review that. If it's a sergeant that has allegations against him, then it will be commanders and above that review it. And so, yeah, it's from usually within the department. There have been a few investigations that were investigated outside the department. And, but yeah, almost all of them are within the department.
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Councilmember Sterns.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for allowing me a third question. Can I follow up on Robbins? So there are two things. One is, I believe she was talking about allegations of misconduct. And so in terms of that specific area, number one, how do people, you know, how do they know how to make a complaint? And number two, are all the findings subject to the chief of police's final determination? Can he overturn those outcomes? And then also, just maybe separately, a third question would be, is there a separate process, I suppose it would be internal, for use of force review? Is there a force review board or a force incident team?
Okay, so, yeah, first question, how are people able to, I think, make a complaint? So if they want to make a complaint out on the street, which happens sometimes to the officer, the officer will call the sergeant to the scene. We get people who call 911 to make a complaint and that gets generated as a call for the supervisor to call. We also have on our website a button that people can click on on how to make a complaint and it defines how people can make a complaint. We have a form that they can fill out or they can come to the station and ask to talk to a sergeant or a commander. So there's various ways that people can make those complaints. Let's see, what was your second question again?
Oh, the second one is following up on Robbins was, if there is a review of misconduct, is that still subject to final determination of the chief? And then the last one, is there a separate process for force review?
Yeah, so it's, our assistant chief is at that, is in the level of approving the discipline. And so, you know what, our department is small enough, if you will, to where when we have a review board going on or an investigation going on, I keep the chief and the assistant chief well-informed of what's going on. They will have conversations and so, yes, if there is misconduct found, they will have conversations and the assistant chief has the final determination of discipline. Now, as far as use of force, yeah, we, our officers complete a use of force report within our system and it goes to their supervisor, it then goes to a commander and then it goes to the assistant chief to review. And so all of our force reports get reviewed. And if we feel like that maybe an officer might need some more training, you know, just based on how they're maybe communicating with people or whatnot, then we will use people within our defensive tactics crew of trainers to maybe do some extra training if necessary. That doesn't happen very often and so all of the force reports do get reviewed.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Trout Manuel has a question?
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Well, it's not much of a question, it's a recommendation. I would like to make a recommendation to our council to look into a a civil, a citizen, let me see, I'm sorry, I wrote my, a citizen, an independent review board made up by citizens. I know that our police is doing their job and they have their own board, review board and stuff. And I think, I've been thinking about this for quite a while, that I think we need in our city, a independent review board made up of citizens and business people so that citizens can go to them and file complaints and they could meet with the police board. But I am making a recommendation to have our attorney to see how it can be implemented in our city. And to go out, I know that several cities have an independent review board and it would be nice to get some samples of how they're doing it, how effective it is. But so that is my recommendation.
Councilmember Sterns is raising his hand?
Councilmember Sterns.
I just wanted to say that I have spent a good part of my time over the over recent years working on some various forms of police accountability, especially in light of human rights standards and the need for independent oversight is really important. So I definitely share your concerns, Councilmember Trout Manuel. And I agree, it's worth looking at.
Okay, everybody, I think we will go ahead and move on. Commander, thank you very much for the presentation, very timely. And again, as the statistics show, I believe all of our officers in Auburn are doing an exemplary job. And I know the commanders, the assistant chief, the chief are on top of this. We really appreciate how you handle things. And as far as the other, yes, we will look into that. And council will probably be briefed on how that can go forward in relation to what we can and cannot do. And we'll look forward to those conversations as well. So Commander, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item agenda four B. This is our South King County Housing and Homeless Partners, known as SKIP. And this is a presentation for our year-end report for 2019, 2021 draft work plan and 2021-2022 budget overview. And I believe Director Tate, she will take it off.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm just going to talk for a couple minutes to get a little bit of background. I'm going to turn it over to Angela Stantlin, who Auburn City Council hasn't met yet. Angela has hired into the role to lead us South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership group. But I do want to just provide a couple of contextual pieces of information. I'll turn it over to Angela. First of all, just a reminder to council that back on January 13th, I did come before the city council to provide an overview of what SKIP is. So I'm not going to go through that whole presentation, but there are a couple of highlights that I'm just going to reiterate real quickly. So first of all, the South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership group is
Jeff, you're breaking up on us a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're skipping in and out.
There's a lot of background noise on my end of paper moving, so.
Okay.
Maybe that's helping interrupt. I apologize, so.
That's okay, no problem.
Okay, so South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership, SKIP, was formed through an interlocal agreement last year. It's an interlocal between the cities of Auburn, Uriah, Huffington, Des Moines, Betterway, Kent, Normandy Park, Renton, Tucklilla and King County. Those 10 partners have made a commitment to collectively work on housing issues in South King County. Their approach is to look at solutions and strategies and funding, all of those types of things since this issue faces all of our municipalities together. Each county, each city, each partner provides a certain amount of funding based upon city size to help fund SKIP. And that funding goes to support SKIP staff and some of the operational needs. Auburn is the administering agency, so Angela works out of the city of Auburn, but is really representing all 10 municipalities. And then the work that SKIP is doing by the executive board and the mayor, Nancy Mierbackus, is the executive board chair. So just those couple little background pieces, Angela's going to jump into, you know, the work that SKIP's doing and the work and work plan coming forward in the next couple of years. So with that, I'll turn my video and my mic off and turn it over to Angela.
Thanks very much, Jeff, for the introduction. I am going to clear my screen here. Okay, yes, thank you so much, council, for having me tonight to provide a little bit of background. of background. As Jeff indicated, I just started in January, a very interesting time to start a new position, as we're all dealing with a lot of uncertainty, and I want to take the opportunity to just introduce myself to all of you as the executive manager for Skip, really the first staff member since the interlocal agreement became formalized in 2019. And then, as Jeff said, just walk you through some of the information that was provided in your packet. I want to walk through some of the milestones that happened in 2019 to get us to this point that are outlined in that 2019 end-of-the-year report, as well as talk through the work that's planned for 2020, as well as 2021, and then provide just a brief overview of the budget for future years as well. Some brief updates, and Jeff covered a little bit of this, but I just really wanted to highlight the amount of work that went into formalizing Skip. It was the result of many years of collaboration and effort by South King County cities, elected officials, and housing advocacy groups to increase the available options for South King County community members to access affordable housing and preserve existing affordable housing stock in South King County. The key priorities and things that will help to achieve this overall mission are to provide a unified voice for South King County, develop shared solutions to regional housing needs, to help ensure that our neighbors are able to stay in the region, stay in their homes, and to serve the most vulnerable populations in the area. This is one slide that summarizes that 2019 report with just some of the key milestones. Monthly meetings and coordination by the Skip Executive Board, which has a representative of each of the 10 jurisdictions, as well as monthly meetings by the staff work group that has staff from nine of the 10. Normandy Park does not provide staff because they have such a small, small amount of staff, but that makes up the staff work group. And really, the collaboration and the monthly commitments and need really made these milestones possible throughout 2019. The interlocal agreement became effective in January, but really took several months into 2019 for all partner jurisdictions to formally adopt and sign the interlocal agreement. It was about midway through the year that the city of Auburn took on the very important role of the administering agency, helping to develop budgets, ensuring the hiring process moved forward, and other administrative related tasks. In July 2019, the executive board agreed on action items that would inform Skip's first work plan once staff was hired. Six of the nine Skip partner cities came together to jointly work on a subregional housing needs and policy assessment, and Skip became the fiscal agent, helping to solidify that work and ensure that it moves forward. And then throughout the second half of 2019, Skip partners advocated together to enable legislation to accept sales credit for affordable housing, as allowed by legislative... In November, the Skip Executive Board passed a resolution that encouraged partners to pool those funds, to come together and use those funds as a regional pool for affordable housing. That advocacy effort is still continuing, but it really was kicked off there at the end of the year through that resolution, encouraging the partners to pool those funds. And then at the end of the year, as we've already talked about, first staff was hired, and I came on board as the executive manager in January of 2021, or 2020. This next one is an overview of the timeline for the adoption of the work plan, as well as the budget for 2021. I'm currently in the process, tonight is part of this process, of presenting and reviewing the work plan with Skip partner jurisdictions, before the Skip Executive Board formally adopts the work plan and the budget this summer. This will be followed by individual jurisdiction adoption in late summer or early fall. This is as outlined in the interlocal agreement. The plan itself, that's included in the packet, is really split up into three key work areas. The first being around governance and administration. This covers some of the program-wide management activities, startup procedures, development of the budget and the work plan, and then also establishing an advisory committee that will help to inform future Skip Executive Board decisions. The outcomes of this area of the work plan are clear measures of progress and success as the work of Skip moves forward, and then ensuring equitable outcomes across the region. This ties back to the advisory committee, and bringing the necessary voices into the decision-making process. The second area of work is around policy and planning. This includes advocacy for the Skip Housing Capital Fund, and continuing to work on pooling of those House Bill 1406 funds, as I talked about being a key theme at the end of 2019, and then also moving forward in 2020. Also developing an administrative program for those funds, and inventorying affordable, inventorying affordable housing that's vulnerable to market pressures. This is both subsidized housing in the area, as well as naturally occurring affordable housing, that will help to prioritize efforts around preparation of existing housing stock. This also incorporates collaborating on local policies and programs across jurisdictions that will help to accelerate access to new housing, protect existing housing stock, and provide housing security for residents. This also includes supporting the development of housing action plans, and this is part of the work that's been done by the six South King County partner cities, and funded by Department of Commerce grant funds for House Bill 1923. Some of the outcomes of this area of work include increased resources for affordable housing in South King County, so not just a local funding source, and establishing a local funding source, but also thinking about how we can best leverage other outside funding sources in South King County. Another outcome would be the increased number of housing action plans in South King County jurisdictions, and new or enhanced programs and legislation that promote affordable housing strategies across the region. The third and final work area in the plan is around outreach and education. This includes representing South King County at local and regional decision-making tables, meetings, and forums. This really goes back to ensuring there's a unified voice for South King County, and we're represented. Also furthering stakeholders, as well as elected officials, understanding of housing needs, the range of opportunities in the area, and developing state and federal advocacy priorities around housing, that Skip partners and elected officials can use as part of advocacy efforts during legislative sessions. The outcomes of this area of work are South King County is heard, considered, and supported, increased interest from affordable housing developers, both for-profit and nonprofit in the South King County area, and changes in policies, programs, and funding sources that would benefit affordable housing in South King County. As I said, I wanted to take the opportunity to also provide an overview of the proposed contributions for the next few years for all of the Skip partners. So this is a very simplistic slide showing a little bit of the budget overview, and really just wanted to highlight that in 2019, as well as projected for 2020, we're gonna have significant personnel cost savings because of the timing of hiring staff, because I didn't start till 2020, and there was personnel cost for my position in 2019, as well as there is a second position in the budget as a program coordinator that has yet to be hired. There's enough cost savings that we can maintain the existing contributions as they are shown up there in that table by population through 2022. This not only enables us to maintain those current jurisdiction contributions, but also to make sure that we're able to hire that Skip program coordinator position at a three-quarter time level to start off with, and then reevaluated as we move forward with the work plan. This will make sure that we are able to implement the work plan, and we have enough staff support to see that through. You'll see the city of Auburn there, with the population, has a contribution of $26,000 a year, and a commitment to maintain that contribution through 2022 without any increases in that. The last thing that I really wanted to touch briefly on is the COVID-19 pandemic, and some of the, and just reflect on housing prior to the pandemic. This information was shared by King County FMA Affordable Housing Committee. I think it really helps to ground the work that not only the Affordable Housing Committee does for the whole region, but the work that Skip does, and the work that I outlined that we're gonna be working on over the next couple of years. So, before this current crisis, before our existing uncertainty that we're all in now, we were already in a housing crisis in King County, and really across the nation. A third of households were experiencing cost burden. That means they were paying more than 30% of their income on housing and related costs. We also had an underproduction of housing since 2011. We have population growing greater than housing production, adding to this housing crisis, and wages have not kept pace with that increased housing cost, which furthers the cost burden experienced by residents in the area. Also, just another thing to highlight is the disproportionality. Renters are twice as likely to be cost-burdened as owners are, and people of color are significantly more likely to be paying more than half of their income on housing. This is before COVID-19, and some of the likely scenarios, I'm not sharing this with you to increase anybody's anxiety around the situation that we're in, but rather to ground the work that each city does, and the importance of the work that Skip is doing in helping to achieve moving forward. So some of the likely scenarios based on the COVID-19 pandemic are potential increases in cost burden. Housing supply, because of that underproduction that I talked about, is so low that prices are not likely to go down much as a result of this, and so we see the potential for cost burden to rise, increasing disproportionality on some of those vulnerable populations, potential renters and owners facing evictions and foreclosures, increasing the affordable housing challenges. And then the funding uncertainty. So, as we're probably all aware right now, as we're looking at planning for future years' budget, funding sources are uncertain, and that remains true for affordable housing funding as well. So as I said, I don't, I don't mean this to increase any of your anxiety, but rather just to show that with the economic impacts and the job losses of the coronavirus pandemic, the need for housing for all families is an even more critical issue. And the long-term policy changes, establishing some of those local funding sources, and the coordination and collaboration that I went over that are part of Skip's overall mission and work plan, are more crucial than ever to help address housing affordability in the South King County region. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to hopefully be able to address them, or any feedback on the work plan or the budget.
Angela, thank you very much for this presentation, and a delayed welcome aboard, but we're glad you're on board.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for bringing forward the information from the Affordable Housing Committee. I serve in that committee, and we've had extensive discussions around these issues that you shared with us today. One of the concerns that we have, that we all should have, is currently during the moratorium that's in place for evictions, and those folks that are currently cost-burdened, as you said, one in three before COVID-19, and it's probably even more than that now, as we know, but as the moratorium ends on the eviction status, tenants are gonna have to make up their back rent, and those that are currently already rent-burdened, in many cases paying upwards of 50% of their income for rent, are gonna find it, it's very difficult, in some cases next to impossible, to get caught up on their rent, even though they may be put on payment plans. So it puts additional burden on them. And I'm curious, Angela, and perhaps American addresses too, as the chair of the board, has there been any discussions in Skip related to what might happen once the moratorium ends, and people are even becoming more cost-burdened, and have to find a way to pay their back rent?
So, we haven't had those specific conversations at the Skip level with the executive board, primarily because the focus has been on some of these long-term policy work, as well as establishing funding sources for some preservation, and for a bit more of those longer-term strategies. I will say, there has been a lot of work through the CARES Act to provide rental assistance opportunities, funding, and other avenues for that, that I know each city has been working on how to spend those, and how to meet community, community members' needs. And I don't know if Mayor Backus, you want to add anything to that?
Yes, thank you. So, there has been some discussion with the, with individual cities, with the 1406, am I getting the right number, with the 1406 dollars, because if you are a city under 100,000 in population, you can utilize those dollars for rental assistance. And so there has been some discussion from individual cities under that population within Skip, as to how they're going to utilize their 1406 dollars, but there has been no formal action taken at the Skip board.
Thank you. I think one of the other challenges we're going to be facing is, and Angela brought it up in the slide as well, with the need of 244,000 units over the next 20 years. And prior to COVID-19, there was kind of a work plan the Affordable Housing Committee had in place to kind of move toward that target. One of the things I brought up in the last meeting was that with our contractors, who are now just coming back to work, it's gonna be somewhat challenging, if not very challenging, to get the developers and contractor base to build affordable housing in the context of what the real need is for affordable housing. Those folks are in business to make a profit, and in some cases, building the affordable housing stock is not very profitable. So we may have future challenges we need to work on, both through Affordable Housing Committee, through the state of Washington, Department of Commerce, as well as Skip and other organizations like Skip, to kind of work through those obstacles as well, because they will be upon us here very shortly. So, council, any questions from you?
Councilmember Sterns has a question?
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you. Angela, yeah, it was really good, I had a great opportunity to attend the presentation you did back when we could all meet, up in, I think it was Renton.
Yeah.
Back in February. Can you just talk a little bit about what, you know, safe and affordable housing means? I mean, what is, what is it an indicator of for people?
Yeah, I mean, housing is a social determinant of health, so having housing really is a public health issue, as well as a financial issue for a lot of people. When you have safe, affordable housing, you're able to spend money on other necessary things if you're not housing cost-burdened, so thinking about medical costs, food, schooling, any of those things, but it is a very significant determinant of public health, having safe and secure and affordable housing. So, I don't know if that's exactly what you were looking for, but...
Yeah, that's it, thanks.
Councilmember Trump Manuel has raised her hand.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Angela, did I hear you correctly that you're gonna hire a program coordinator? And when are you going to start looking for one?
We just, the Skip Executive Board just provided direction on that, that we will be starting that process this summer, with the target date of hiring someone in the fall. That will be a little bit dependent on our current situation as well, but that would be the target. be the target.
So is that going to go out to all of the 10 communities to choose from?
It would go out a little bit wider net, so in terms of advertising, yeah. So we would put it out there, advertising across the region, but also outside of the region as well.
And the budget is coming from to hire this person?
It's from our existing budget. So we do existing funds as part of the budget for that second staff member and then some of the personnel kind of cost savings enable us to hire a program coordinator.
Thank you very much for a great report.
So, Council, one last comment for me. I've mentioned it before, but even in Auburn, you know, our affordable housing rents in some cases, you might say aren't quite affordable. As I mentioned before, you know, some of the rent bases with some of the affordable housing complexes, if you're a single-person household, in order not to make more than, in order not to pay more than 30% of your income for housing, you need to make $25 an hour as a single-person household. So as a two-person household, basically two people, in some cases working minimum wage jobs, would need to work full-time in order to not pay more than 30% of their income. So the, the chance of being rent burdened is very high and will continue to be high. And as Angela pointed out, we're not expecting the rents or the price of housing to decrease during a recessionary period of time. All indicators state that and show that, that it's going to be stable even during a recessionary period of time as we probably are in and probably will continue to go through for a period of time. So just some things to keep in mind.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
So Angela, thank you very much again. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Councilmember Sterns? Okay, that's okay. Councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to follow up on that really important point you made about, you know, how much it costs to live and, and, you know, I was talking to Doug with our staff, the mayor's staff, about all those brand-new units that are coming online downtown and how much you'd have to make to be able to afford to live there and how important it is to, you know, have jobs so people aren't forced to commute to Seattle or Bellevue, so they can actually work in Auburn and then walk home and how wonderful that would be.
I, I agree totally, yes. All right. All right, Angela, once again, thank you very, very much for the presentation and we look forward to future presentations from you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we're going to move on to Item 4C, which is Ordinance Number 6777, and Director Thomas.
Hello, good evening. Thank you. This Ordinance 6777 is actually almost exactly like the ordinance that Council adopted back on March 23rd, Ordinance 6767. It's just an extension of the waiver of late fees on utility bills as well as suspending shut-offs in the meantime. In the original ordinance that the Council adopted back in March, we had suspended those shut-off days, the late fees, the water shut-off through June 30th. Since the COVID issue seems to be a concern for our residents, we are extending those waivers through August 31st, is our proposal. And just a point of note, we've been monitoring really closely our, the number of late accounts that we have and we've actually noticed that we're right on track with what the number of late accounts that we typically have under normal circumstances. I don't know if the waiver of the late fees has helped to make things more manageable or if perhaps it's stimulus money and it's helping residents. But either way, we haven't seen a huge, a huge uptick. We continue to work those accounts and some reach out and contact our residents to remind them that even though that we are suspending late fees, that the amount is still due, the consumption, the water consumption and these surges continue to remain and that they will ultimately have to be paid even though we're not charging those late fees or turning off water utilities. Did anybody have any questions about our proposal to extend through August 31st?
Councilmember Trump Manuel has raised her hand.
Councilmember Trump Angel.
Jamie, that's wonderful to hear. I, I don't have a question, but I know that that's going to help a lot of people and make them more at ease on how to move forward on this. So thank you, that's really good news.
Okay, Jamie, thank you very much for the presentation and appreciate you being here tonight. All right, next, we will move into Items 5, which is our Public Works and Community Development Discussion Items. And since the Special Focus Area Chair, Councilmember Brown has been excused, I'm going to ask Councilmember Sterns, the Vice Chair of the Public Works and Community Development, to conduct this part of the meeting. Councilmember Sterns.
Yes, thank you very. So first of all, we're going to have a presentation on the Pierce Transit Long Range Plan Presentation and looks to be pretty interesting. So I guess without any delay, we'll go right into that. And I believe that will be done by who's Senior Transportation Planner Malik. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So Pierce Transit recently completed an update to their long-range plan. And one of their planners, Darren, is getting ready to update you on what they've done. And I will be available if you have further questions for us, but I will give the place to Darren.
Thank you. Can you all see the slide okay? Did I share correctly?
Yes, we can.
Great, so you should be on the title slide. All right. Well, with that, I thank you for your invitation to present on our Long Range Plan Update this evening, albeit remotely. We appreciate your continued interest in this document and what we set out to achieve when we first considered an update to our original Destination 2040 Long Range Plan that was finalized and adopted by our Board of Commissioners back in April of 2016. The idea for this minor update to the Long Range Plan came out of the suggestion of our Board of Commissioners in the spring of 2019, even though it's not required by the Puget Sound Regional Council, MPO, yet. Their suggestion was to look at the current fixed route network and again, show where improvements could be made that would ideally and ultimately increase ridership in the 2020s and beyond. But this time, we agreed to base this scenario on an actual additional funding level, unlike in the 2016 Long Range Plan that were based on three growth scenario percentages of 2%, 2.5% and 3% from what was then our baseline of 454,000 annual fixed route service hours. Before the COVID-19 pandemic hit, we were holding steady at just over 500,000 annual service hours in our budget. There are a few other pieces to the puzzle that weren't covered back in 2014 to 2016 when the inaugural Long Range Plan was being developed, but we'll discuss those a bit later in the presentation. Another key reason for doing a Long Range Plan Update are all the changes in the past four years, not only to our system but to sound transit, the cities of University Place and Tacoma, Pierce County and beyond. Undoubtedly, the biggest for us was a complete fixed route overhaul that was introduced in the March 2017 service change. As part of that redesign process, we did lots of public engagement to learn which routes were the most important or productive, which should be enhanced or improved and which could be cut or eliminated. But since we did not have the funding to implement the consultants recommended, recommended alternative in its entirety, we did keep some routes or service on a contingency or wish list, and those were therefore the first we considered as part of this update and proposed scenarios. Now, the various sections in the document are shown here. We attempted to keep the topic similar in this document to those found in the original Long Range Plan for consistency. We also had certain planning partners remind us that this should be intended as a supplement or supporting document to the original and not something that replaces it in its entirety. And this is a special note since the Puget Sound Regional Council, MPO, intends to have all the transit agencies throughout the region and their partners do full new long-range plans beginning in early 2022 to directly align with their Vision 2050 Plan once it's finalized and adopted by then. To me, the most exciting thing about improving our bus system or the land use changes and redevelopment projects that are happening that directly support transit users and walkability through higher densities and greater potential demand. In fact, many of the projects that were only in the planning stages a little less three years ago are now already, already being built. And perhaps the most interesting topic we covered in the update were all the cool technological advances that are rapidly changing the way we communicate and get around. For example, autonomous or driverless vehicles that were only a concept in 2016, if you remember, will be a reality within a few short years. As I mentioned in the opening of the presentation, the primary focus of the plan, which one of our planners cleverly named a fiscally constrained vision, is to show exactly what service improvements we could offer if we were to go from the current 0.6% to the full 0.9% sales taxing authority were allowed under the Pierce County Public Transportation Benefit Area, that is, the service area. That system, along with a new fixed, a few new fixed routes, another bus rapid transit or high-capacity transit route, most likely our current routes, two or three down here in Tacoma, Lakewood and University Place, and especially much more frequent and reliable service are all shown in a menu of options, including the annual service hours and cost assumptions required for each. Some proposed examples are shown on this slide. A one that I should particularly highlight for you all is the new Route 498, and that would be a route that would connect the Tacoma Dome Lake Extension Station in Fife to your Auburn Sounder Station, once that Tacoma Dome Lake Extension opens for service all the way down here by 2030. It also helped to have the population and employment growth targets to site as provided by the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 Network that I mentioned in cooperation with our Pierce County Planning Partners. As in 2016, the Puget Sound Regional Council modeled our new network for ridership and those results and analysis were provided in Appendix B of the document. The key takeaway for me from their work was how our ridership could conceivably triple by 2050, especially given the Sound Transit 3 build-out and interconnectedness of our proposed system expansion, both locally and regionally. Our visit network includes the new Route 498 that I mentioned, and we're pretty excited about that. And it modeled quite well, actually, in looking at it, they were, it would model at 2,900 boardings per day, average weekday. I included these maps to highlight the number of frequent routes proposed. As such, the agency is looking to, into a system-wide study to determine where and when we'd want to start designing our next bus rapid transit routes and in what order. As you know, we're currently in design for our Pacific Avenue, I'll stay at Route 7 Bus Rapid Transit, which is our inaugural project from downtown Tacoma to Spanaway. It's 14 and a half miles. What's depicted here are the current routes, two and three that I mentioned, as possible BRT, which continue to perform well for us year after year, both are ideal candidates for an upgrade. On this map, you can see that the majority of our routes are of 15 to 30 minutes and with our trunk routes, our main routes, our most utilized routes, operating from 10 to 15-minute frequencies. And this is something that we heard time and time again as we, we continue to talk to the public about what they're looking for. It's really the same thing that we hear, and that is more frequency, more reliability, later nights and more weekend service, and that doesn't change. Another advantage we didn't have six years ago when we began the inaugural of Destination 2040 Long Range Plan were all the web-based interaction tools that are now available. We chose the same tool that Spokane Transit uses to gather information, public comments and suggestions. It's called Social Pinpoint. A glimpse of this site's dashboard of what we've received so far is what's on this slide. The site also allows visitors to pin comments geographically throughout the service area as well as extend or move existing routes, essentially creating your own system or building your own system. Add photos or images of likes and dislikes or things they'd like to see us change, and they can like or dislike other comments, similar to Facebook where they can do a thumbs up or thumbs down comment. We still have a more basic text-only survey on our website, too, and with it, we've gathered over 300 comments so far, and that survey will be up and available until the end of June. Again, what we're hearing is very much what we heard back in 2016 and beyond, and that's more frequent, reliable service, longer span, early mornings, late nights, and expanded weekend service offerings. Finally, I, with all of us working remotely from mid-March until further notice due to the pandemic and the state home orders, our timeline for adoption of this Long Range Plan Update has been extended by five months as follows. The public review and comment period ends on June 30th, as I mentioned. We'll then present this information to our Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting of August 10th, including allowing the public to comment, assuming we're back to meeting and presenting in person by then. And the focus of that presentation to the Board will be really what we've heard, not only from the public but from, from you, our esteemed planning partners in the cities we serve. And finally, we'll ask for their formal adoption of the Destination 2040 Long Range Plan Update at their September 14th meeting, at their September 14th regular meeting, which is delayed a week because of the Labor Day holiday. Of course, we'd very much appreciate a formal comment letter from Auburn if you'd like to submit one, if you have time to look at the plan, anything that you like or anything we could do differently. It's, it's exciting for us. Unfortunately, the pandemic really threw us for a loop and that wasn't something that we were looking at or even planning for when we started this process. It was really an expansion plan. But I think, you know, obviously, we still want to keep expansion plans at the forefront of what we're doing. We're hoping that a quick recovery and the nimbleness of rubber-tired buses will allow us to bring service back, especially on the most productive routes and ideally back to a full system structure in early '21. And with that, I can answer any questions on the plan. I know I talk fast and I know there's a lot to absorb or digest.
That, that was great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And really good to hear about the 498, which sounds like, I think you mentioned or somewhere I saw that it kind of expands the 497 and 501 routes.
Correct. And those 497 and the 501 would, would still, would still exist. In fact, the 501 would go to a 30-minute headway in this scenario, so it would be every half hour instead of on the hour as it is currently.
Wow. Well, that, that's great for people who live up in Lakewood Hills.
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic.
Yes. And the 497 would stand 20-minute headways or frequencies as it does today.
Wow. Are, are there questions?
There are no hands raised.
Wow. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you all, and please, please call me or write or if you have any questions about the plan. And again, it will be available through the end of June, and I hope you take a look at it. I think there's a lot of good information in there, especially the technology and a lot of the things that just didn't exist four years ago that we're, we're looking at today. Thank you all for your interest and for the invitation. It's very kind.
All right. Okay, I guess we're going to our next presentation, which is the Lee Hill Road Corridor Study, which is a pretty huge project but, but really important for the city of Auburn. And I'm not sure who's going to do that presentation, but please start. I'm really looking forward to it.
Hey, good evening, Council. For the record, my name is Ryan Von Drack, Capital and Construction Engineering Manager for the city. Good evening. We're going to present the results of our Lee Hill Road Corridor Study. I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully you guys see that.
We can see it, Ryan. Thank you.
Okay. So, a little background first. The Lee Hill Corridor Study was initiated in the fall of 2018 with the help of our consultant, SCJ Alliance. The study was initiated to develop a long-range mobility, capacity and safety plan for the Lee Hill Corridor. For the sake of the corridor study, if you take a look at the red line on the map that's on the screen, the, this is what we're, the area that we're calling Lee Hill Road Corridor encompasses parts of 8th Street Northeast, east of the M Street Northeast, Harvey Road intersection, Lee Hill Road Southeast and Southeast 312th until you reach 124th Avenue Southeast. This is a critical arterial that connects to downtown Auburn, the Auburn Golf Course, the entire Lee Hill neighborhood, Green River College and State Route 18. The city's 2015 comp plan noted the need for widening the corridor to two lanes in each direction. However, there are some significant challenges that we face along the corridor, including constraints associated with the buildings and structures along 8th Street Northeast, and you see that shown in pink on the screen. Then you have the steep slopes and historic landslides, and that's shown in orange, as well as other environmental impacts, including wetlands and streams. well as other environmental impacts, including wetlands and streams, and those are shown in blue on this particular map. The challenge of this study is to develop a design that adequately balances the need to keep people moving safely and efficiently, with the need to manage project costs, as well as environmental risks and impacts. So, from the onset, the objective that we set out to accomplish for this study is to include a plan that accommodates the projected traffic growth that we expect to see in the year after, meets the city's mobility goal, enhances safety for all roadway users, and then increases access for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit riders. We got the public involved early and often. The project team met with the Transportation Advisory Board at a couple of their meetings. We also met with key stakeholders, including King County Metro, the Green River College, Auburn Police, Valley Regional Fire Authority, and the Auburn School District. We also solicited feedback, project websites, web pages that we posted on the city's website, as well as held in-person and virtual public events. So, if we take a look at some existing information and data along this corridor, we have a photo of Lee Hill Road Southeast as we're approaching 5th Place Southeast. You can see there are no sidewalks for pedestrian access, no bike lanes, and those seeking transit facilities need to stand along the roadside with no refuge area on the right-hand side of the screen. And similarly, along the Lee Hill Road Southeast, looking uphill and the eastbound direction, you have an identical situation. This is pretty much the case throughout this entire corridor. Along the east end of this corridor, you don't really see pedestrian facilities until you reach 116th Avenue Southeast, and they're only on the north side of the roadway, and then there's also a gap in that particular sidewalk. And then on the west end, these facilities don't really show up until you reach the 8th Street Bridge crossing the river. Here we have some crash data along the corridor for the five-year period that ran from 2014 to 2018. There were a total of 328 incidents of all various types along this corridor. The circles represent, that you see on the map, the circles represent accidents that happened at intersections, and then the boxes represent accidents that happened mid-block of a particular roadway segment. Level of Service is the performance term that we use to help us determine how well an intersectional roadway segment operates from the driver's perspective, and they're represented by letter grades. So, in looking at the graphic on your screen, a level of Service A at the top left would represent a free-flow condition at an intersection with no traffic congestion. And then when you move, and then as the, you move down the list, you see the situation gets worse and worse until you reach a level of Service F, which is virtual traffic gridlock. We're always trying to design our roadways to meet an A, B, or C grade. That's not always achievable. The 2015 comp plan for the Lee Hill Corridor set the minimum of a level of Service E for this particular corridor. And anytime we reach a level of Service E, that is when we begin looking for ways to mitigate that unstable congestion situation and try to move it back up into one of the A, B, or C categories. This graphic shows the different levels of Service grades for each of the intersections along the roadway corridor for what's happening out there today versus what will happen 20 years from now, if we do absolutely nothing to the corridor and make no improvements to the roadway network. So, if you take a look at it as an example, the Lee Hill Road Southeast and 112th Avenue Southeast intersection, this currently operates at a level of Service C. And in 20 years, if we do absolutely nothing, this intersection will operate at a level of Service F, which is the gridlock situation. So, if we take a look at that particular intersection, here's what it looks like today in the westbound direction. We're looking at on Southeast 312th Street, looking westbound at the intersection of 112th Avenue Southeast, and the gridlock situation would make it virtually impossible or extremely difficult to make turns in and out of 112th Avenue onto Southeast 312th Street. When evaluating the project alternatives for the study, we considered the following eight performance metrics. We use these metrics to formulate recommendations that we are moving forward with for the corridor, and those metrics are corridor safety, intersection operations, corridor operations, Lee Hill Neighborhood connectivity, pedestrian mobility and transit access, bike mobility, environmental risks, as well as right-of-way impacts. The public and key stakeholders that we met with rated corridor safety, intersection operations, and neighborhood connectivity as the most important things to consider for developing the alternatives. So, as we move into the alternatives, or what I'm going to do for these next few slides is give you a little bit of an overview of the recommendations moving forward from the west end of the corridor all the way up to the east end. So, starting with the roadway cross-section for the 8th Street Bridge, on the screen, there are the red bar that's across the river, that's the 8th Street Bridge. There's not much you can do there, given the existing structure. However, we can eliminate or rechanalize the bridge to where we can ban the sidewalks on both ends of the bridge. And then, at the intersection of 104th Avenue Southeast and 8th Street Northeast, we plan on a multi-lane roundabout at that intersection. It'll be the first multi-lane roundabout in the city. We do have a few roundabouts scattered in a couple locations throughout the city. Some of you know the 22nd and 9th Street Northeast Roundabout, which functions very well. This would be the first multi-lane roundabout with two lanes going in the eastbound/westbound direction, and then one lane in the north and southbound direction. And then we also have the, we're going to call the Garden Avenue, it's also 102nd Avenue connection to 104th Avenue Southeast. This project will take Garden Avenue or 102nd Avenue Southeast, change it. It currently accesses 8th Street North. We'll close off that access and turn it into a cul-de-sac, and then create a new roadway connection from Garden Avenue to 104th Avenue Southeast. Then, as we move up along the hillside, the section shown in blue on the screen, that's the cross-section that would be shown for the Lee Hill Road Southeast part of the corridor. And here, you're still going to see, we're recommending one car, or one lane in each direction, but then you'll see a bike lane on the northbound, or the north side of the roadway, and then on the south side, you see a 10-foot-wide shared-use path. In addition, the 105th Place Southeast intersection, we're recommending that the signal there be removed, and then that roadway connection would change to a right-in, right-out-only situation. There's, and with that, there, the, as a result of us making it a right-in, right-out-only situation, this is a kind of a significant change, but it is, will help out with safety. It's had some, a lot of speeding and accidents along the Southeast 320th Street Corridor for individuals going to and from the college, so that'll alleviate some of that. And you'll see on my next screen, we provide access through 112th Avenue Southeast. The other addition on the Lee Hill Road Southeast Corridor would be pedestrian-activated crosswalks. So, those pictures that I showed earlier, where individuals had to stand on the side of the roadway, you would have RRFB or Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons that would be installed for pedestrians. Those are those beacons that light up, and you press the button, and allows you to cross the street, and people stop, wait for you to cross the street. Moving further along the corridor to the east, you have the cross-section changes slightly to add sidewalks now on the north side, so the rest of the cross-section stays the same, one lane in each direction, a bike lane on the north side, and then the 10-foot shared-use path, and then you would introduce a sidewalk beginning on the north side. And at this location, you'd also see, we are recommending a roundabout at 112th Avenue Southeast, and this would not be a multi-lane roundabout, this would be a one-lane roundabout, single lane. And then continuing further, as we enter Southeast 312th Streets, the cross-section in green shown there, now you have larger sidewalks on both sides of the road. You introduce two bike lanes, one on the north side, one on the south side, and then you still see the one lane in each direction. And then at 116th Avenue Southeast, we are recommending another single-lane roundabout. And then as you enter that purple section, the cross, the roadway cross-section there, similar as the green section, however, now you're introducing that two-way left turn lane in the center, so still one lane in each direction, bike lanes on both sides, and large pedestrian sidewalks. As we implement this plan, we have kind of created a series of five projects. Looking at the map here, the pink at the bottom of the screen, this is that Garden Avenue, 102nd Avenue Southeast closure, and this project is actually something we are working on right now, but I'll get to that in a little bit. You have the green section there, which is that 104th Avenue Southeast and 8th Street Northeast improvements, which include the multi-lane roundabout at 104th Avenue Southeast, as well as some access improvements along there. Then, the, as you get to the orange section, this is where we would have a project that would transition 105th Avenue to a right-in, right-out-only situation, and then create that roundabout at the 112th Avenue intersection. Then the purple is the Lee Hill Road widening improvements. That's where you introduce that shared-use path and the bike lane along this particular corridor. And then the blue is the roundabout at the 116th Avenue with the expanded sidewalks and bike lanes. So, what are our next steps? We have, as I mentioned, we have that Garden Avenue, 102nd Avenue closure project. That is something that's currently funded. We are working on the property acquisition right now, with the expectation that we start design in 2021 and then move into construction in 2022. The remainder of those projects that you saw on the last page, those projects, funding is not yet secured. The opportunity for grants are out there, and we are going to be seeking some opportunities as we move forward for those, and pursuing some applications. They, each of these projects will be added to the comprehensive plan, but the closest one that we are showing is we, the 112th Avenue and 105th Place Southeast projects, we expect to go to design in 2024 with construction sometime around 2026. The total investment of all these projects is just under $25 million. It's a series of projects that we're excited to see move forward, and that was a lot of information. I think I went pretty quick, but if you guys have any questions, that was my presentation.
Well, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. I had two questions. One is, is there any specific order that those five projects have to go in? And then the second question is, I noticed you had crash data, but did you also have data for pedestrian, you know, incidents?
Yeah, so, to answer your first question, we don't have to do the projects in any particular order. It really depends on grant funding opportunities and how well they score in each of those grant opportunities. Each project is going to score differently, and so that's going to be a big player in that. But as far as the implementation, the only thing that really needs to happen at the same time is that project that was shown in orange, which is the 105th and 112th project. As far as crash data, yes, we do have data as far as pedestrians. I believe in that period, there was about eight incidents of pedestrian accidents, or that involved accidents. The data that I provided, the 328, included all of the data, and so within that, there were pedestrian incidents within that.
Deputy Mayor Decorse's raised his hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Ryan, a few questions for me. One, on your slide that you showed the crash information, so we had 45 incidents at 8th and R., which was the second highest on your slide, and I believe, correct if I'm wrong, that a while back, we did have a R. Street right-hand turn lane that was planned, and I think that was a separate project, although it was part of the Lee Hill Expansion, and that's not shown out, and I was wondering if there was a plan to do that again.
You're at the R. Street intersection?
Yes.
Okay. James Webb, our Senior Traffic Engineer, popped on. He may be able to help answer that question.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor Decorse, I'm not familiar with that specific improvement. It's certainly not something that's been included in the TIP in recent years.
Okay. Is that something we could at least perhaps take a look at? I thought I recall maybe times past where we had a discussion on it, maybe it was not a planned project, maybe just a discussion, but with the amount of incidents at that intersection, perhaps it's something we could consider.
That's certainly something we can look at. Are you, I assume you're talking about something in the eastbound, eastbound or northbound?
I believe, I believe it'll be the eastbound. I'm pretty sure it is, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can certainly look at that.
Right. And also, I think we've got that same spot there is on Henry Road, I believe there's a right-hand turn lane there that perhaps could be extended to R. Street, just as a food proposal.
Counselor Trump Manuel's raised your hand.
Those are reserves.
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, on the same comment as Mr. Decorse was asking on all the 328 incidents, were those caused due to speeding, or was it the climate, or what were they mainly
Looks like we might have lost Ryan, so I'll take that. I don't know that there are any specific patterns that the data showed. It's a long corridor. There are different conditions depending on where you are along the corridor. The intersections, there's probably a number of rear-end crashes. Those are common at signalized intersections, but other than that, I don't think there are specific trends that the data showed. But other than that, I don't think there are specific trends that the data showed.
And then my other question on that, is that 100 and, 105th, where you're going to have the ride-in, ride-out? Is that the exit?
That's correct.
Are you going to have a blinking light there to warn people that they can't turn there coming the opposite way?
So if you're coming down from the top of Lee Hill to make the left, probably not a blinking light. That will be something that is identified during the design phase of the project. It'll more likely be some kind of physical separation to stop people making that left turn.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Malanga's raised her hand.
Yes. My question is, where you have the grading for the level of service, where you get A, B, or C, when do you guys do that testing or that review? Is that during high-traffic hours, you know, like the morning traffic or the, you know, late evening traffic when everyone's coming home from work? Or are you doing that just any time in the day? Like, how do you know when you do that test?
So the, the comprehensive transportation plan, the, and the level of service policies identifies the week, so it's a weekday, what we call the PM peak, which is from four to six in the evening, when everybody's trying to head home from work. That's typically the time of day with the highest levels of traffic on the streets. And so that's what we use as our measure.
Deputy Mayor Decoursey's raised his hand.
Hey, thank you. Follow-up to what Councilmember Trump Manuel asked. So at the ride-in, ride-out at 105th, that creates a single lane back down the hill. Is there any kind of explain the reasoning behind that? And was there any opportunity to expand it to more than a single lane?
So at that intersection, that, that particular intersection, we got the most comments from individuals, and it was a very split conversation that we had with, with everyone on that. It is challenging, the, the data that we have with the, the speeding and the, how that, that intersection will operate in the future. There's a number of ways you can go. There's not a lot of room, given the, given that it's a, on an uphill climb, and you have some significant hill on, in order, in order to expand that intersection and make it wider, you'd be cutting into the hillside pretty significantly and pretty expensive. So that's challenging there, as well as any right-of-way acquisition would be potential. So the conversation really centered, as we moved along that particular, as we had those discussions, it really focused on the roundabout at 112th and that the fact that people coming from 105th, it's not that bit of a difference time-wise to get back to the Lee Hill Road corridor from 105th if you were trying to make a left turn from downhill on 105th. And so, yes, it's a challenging intersection, and we would look at it further as we went into the, that, that project that we are proposing to have come to design in 2024. It's certainly something that we would look at further. These are just those preliminary recommendations that we came out with, and we would just go from there.
If, if I can add something to that, by removing the signal, you're no longer going to be stopping vehicles coming down the hill. So that helps to negate the need for that second lane. If we were going to keep the signal there, then as traffic volumes grow, we may need to add that second lane. It's really the intersections on the corridor that control the operation. So by, by taking that signal out, making it ride-in, ride-out only, that lessens the need for any additional capacity there on Lee Hill Road itself.
Okay, great, thank you. Let me add one, one more question that I'll be coming by. Westbound 8th, at the bus stops, the traffic is always backed up behind the buses naturally. Is there any opportunity or any planning for potential pullouts for the buses at that, that area?
So not necessarily as part of the Lee Hill Road project, but the, the transit service that connects from downtown Auburn up to Lee Hill has been identified by King County Metro to be converted to a rapid-ride route in the future. So there may be some potential for changes to the, the locations of the stops and how those stops are configured as, as part of that project. I will say that it is Metro's preference to have those buses stop in the lane. It makes it easier for them to rejoin traffic when they're finished picking up or dropping off passengers. And it prevents vehicles trying to go around them as well while they're stopped.
Right. The reason I ask that is because when I did serve on the RTC, it's one of the questions I raised to Metro as well. And I believe when Councilmember, former Councilmember Osborne was on the RTC, he also raised the same question. And, you know, we always try to convince, or convince Metro that, you know, stopping in the lanes isn't always the best thing to do. So hopefully we consider, and of course, we'd always ask them, any plans in the future to work with the cities much earlier than later to get their plans in place. So, thank you.
Councilmember Trump Manuel's raised her hand.
Yes, I have a question on, as you're going up the hill and on your right-hand side were those apartment complexes. And on your design, did you look at the earth moving? That whole hillside has to look like it's shifting? Is there, do you know of any plans of enforcing that? Or is that something that we look into? Do you know what apartment complex I'm talking about?
You're referring to Lee Hill Road, as you're going up on the right-hand side, north of Lee? You're saying that that particular complex seems like it's sliding?
Yeah, the, the whole hillside, when there's a lot of rain, it has looked where, there has been some areas that have slid. And so I was just wondering if you guys look at that? If, if that's our, our department to look at that hillside? Or is that the apartment complex owner's, you know, responsibility?
Looks like Ingrid jumped on and...
So I think I'll, I'll take that one. So when it has to do with sliding within the private property, it would be the private property owner's responsibility to address. We do watch the roadway down Lee Hill Road for any potential sliding, especially as we saw some sliding happen a few years ago. You might remember that crack that happened down the north and west side of the roadway in the shoulder area.
Yeah.
Monitor that area. But that's also a big part of the reason why this study looked at, what can we do within the corridor we have without having wideness because of the instability of the slope and the concerns with what that would do and what that cost would be to have that be stable for a wider roadway. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. So that, that's why I was inquiring, you know, was there a study that needed to be done? And whose responsibility it was, you know, it was. So thank you for answering that.
Hey, no more questions? Well, thank you, Ryan. I appreciate the great presentation.
Well, thanks for having us. Talk to you guys soon.
And thanks, James, too. Okay, I think next we're going to shift our focus to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we've got a presentation on our city transition plan and a resolution that we'll be considering next week. Is that Cecile, is that you?
Yes, good evening to you.
Great.
Cecile Malik, yes, thank you. Cecile Malik, Senior Transportation Planner. I'm going to share my presentation. Here it is. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
So this evening's presentation was made to the council in November 2019. And we had a discussion at the end of this presentation about coming back to present it again today of this year because we are having new council members. So I'm going to go by myself through this presentation tonight just to give some background on the new policies that we're proposing to meet the American with, with Disabilities Act. The, the proposed policies you will find on page 87 through 89 of your agenda packet. And that's the policies that we'll bring to you next week for a decision. So for the past few years, the city has been working on a draft ADA transition plan for facilities in the public right-of-way to meet the intent of the, the requirements of the American Visibility Act. So this plan has several elements, an overview and background, self-evaluation, and a section about policies and procedures. So part of this, part of this plan involves in outreach, a public outreach portion. So the plan was available for public comments from October through the end of December. The information was published in the paper. The information was sent to identified groups. The information was presented to the Transportation Advisory Committee and also to City Council back in November. So the, the city of Auburn is, is committed to creating and maintaining infrastructure that provides accessibility to program services and activities to all. Part of the research for this plan, we found that about 11% of Auburn residents have a disability. So the goal of this plan is to evaluate the assets, document and develop policies, and plan for full ADA compliance. So the American Disability Act of 1990 and the title two of the ADA are the legal backgrounds for this plan. And so the self-evaluation portion and requirements as for compliance in the curb ramps, the signalized and enhanced pedestrian crossings, and the sidewalks. So this is a section that will be updated annually to, or as, we will try to update annually as possible. To document the progress towards full compliance. So we're not fully compliant today, but because of this plan and the self-evaluation will be able to show our progress year after year. So for the curb ramps, in 2016, staff collected data for an inventory of city ramps. The ramps have been installed and upgraded since then. So we plan to update this inventory as staff and resources are available to add in, within our database. So this is the level of compliance that we found in 2016. Then there's the pedestrian crossings. So we conducted a self-inventory this year of all the traffic signals and pedestrian crossings to evaluate their compliance with the ADA requirement. And this data will be updated periodically to document the changes. And the last section is the sidewalks. So due to the lack of staff and resources available, a self-inventory for this has not yet been completed. So this would be a large time incentive process, which will be planned as resources are available. But all new sidewalks constructed are required to meet ADA requirement. So anytime a development or a project builds sidewalks, they have to meet the ADA requirement. But we just haven't been able yet to inventory all the sidewalks that are existing within the city. But this is something that we would like to do, and we will do when possible. So we do have existing policies to address ADA requirement within the comprehensive plan, within city codes, and within the engineering design standard. And within this ADA transition plan and through this resolution that's welcome to you next week, we are proposing some additional policies which address an exemption of the exemption of minor pavement maintenance activities, roadway and utility work that do not trigger construction of new sidewalks where they are currently non, and also criteria for pedestrian signal push-button installation and upgrades that are triggered for the function and the location. So the details of these policies are on, on the ordinance, on the resolution. So how is the city transitioning to full ADA compliance? So there are several ways that we're working towards compliance. So through capital improvement projects, a lot of which trigger upgrades to meet ADA requirement, through private development projects, some of which also trigger the need to provide upgrades to meet ADA requirement, through franchise and self-party work in the right-of-way, interim accommodation, and also project development and prioritization. So through our own city projects and prioritization based on funding availability, we try to construct improvements to meet the ADA requirement and full compliance. So what are the next steps? Next week, June 15th, you will be presented for action on Resolution 5514. Annually, we will compile new data, review new public comments, which we can receive through email, phone call, or through our webpage for the ADA transition plan. And then we can revise and update the plan administratively. And periodically, as needed, we will update the policies with conform action. And I'm ready for any question you may have.
Great, thank you, Cecile. Do we have any questions?
Deputy Mayor Decoursey's raised his hand. Deputy Mayor, you're still muted.
I'm sorry, thank you. Okay. Cecile, this may be a question more for Ingrid, but on your slide where you showed the inventory, only 16% met ADA, 71% did not meet current ADA, et cetera. I know we've done a lot of work recently, and I was wondering if there is a opportunity to provide us, council, with a periodic update as to how we're completing and what the progress is on the inventory from back in 2016?
Right, so we, we have developed a lot of projects since 2016, and we have staff working on... Right, so we have developed a lot of projects since 2016, and we have staff working on updating the data within our database, working through a massive backlog of data of as-built. So every time that our capital project team creates improvements, they are as-built. And then we have a team that updates this data based on the as-built. So we're not up to date, and we haven't had the resources to look at how much has been done since 2016, but definitely you're correct, a lot has been done since. And this is something that we do need to look into. And unfortunately, we have not been able to because it's quite an undertaking. We are planning on updating as possible, and I imagine that council will be updated regularly when we have some updates. We'll have to keep our ADA transition plan up to date and update our data and document our progress towards full compliance.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Trump Manuel's raised his hand.
Yes, I have to also thank Claude for asking me that question because I was also wondering if we could get an update. It's always nice to have something. So when our constituents ask us, you know, when are they going to do this project, or, you know, when are they going to finish it? So that way, we know what they're talking about. So it would be really nice and handy to have some of these updates. And I know it's been difficult with all, everything that's going on right now, but thank you for saying that you're going to get on top of this. Thank you.
I would just like to add one thing on to what Cecile said to make sure that the council understands the scope and breadth of what this ADA transition plan is. This is not something that we will finish in a year or two. This is something that will probably take a decade in order for us to finish, or even get close to getting things close to meeting the ADA requirement. You have to imagine the city has been built over 100 years, and we have a lot of infrastructure that went in over that time under different standards that now we're trying to match to a more current standard. So I just, I have no problem with doing kind of annual reporting on what we're doing. I just don't want the expectation to be that we're going to be done here in two years because we won't be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns, I've had a request for a recess.
Oh, yeah, we're, this sounds like a good time to take a break. I totally agree. How long do you think?
Five minutes.
The request was for five minutes.
I'm seeing five, five minutes. So we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you.
Shoot, my Surface Battery ran out. Long meeting.
Okay, I'm muted.
Muted too.
Oh, dear God.
Jesus, Mother Mary of God.
I have Ingrid texting me or emailing me, "I can hear every time you type, it's taking it away from the speaker." I'm like, "I don't know what to do about this."
My keyboard is really loud.
So this is a quiet keyboard. Everybody, because Steve was complaining when he first started, that the keyboard that was there was clack, you know, we clacked. And so we bought a quiet keyboard. It, but, so now I move this as far away from me as I can. I put the partition back up, but I'm like, I don't know. I don't know what else to do.
There's just so many things wrong with tonight.
I'm going to have to start bringing snacks.
Big ones. Yeah, big girl ones. Can you please ask for a break? Yes, I can ask for a break. But you could. Usually when we're in here and we have an agenda like this. Yeah. We break in between, we break in between the two topics. Now we're being recorded, but there's not, no mics on. So now there's nothing to refer because there's no mics on. Thank you. Oh, okay, fine. Oh, because we're study session. Like, no, no study, but because we're study session.
Yeah, I think they're put up here.
Because Jason turned us on study session.
Councilmember Trump Manuel realizes that under 9:40, there's already a citizens oversight board for lethal use of force.
I think she wants one for all use of force.
Well, and I, I'm a little concerned, I mean, because you guys review all use of force, but it only gets to the one place. It only get, you know, if it's found in that initial review.
I don't know anybody that does one in the area except Seattle PD, and that's because of their federal.
That federal requirement.
Yep. And then I only know of Pasco that has a citizens advisory board, which, what I know about it doesn't sound horrible, like the chief meets with some community members and they just discuss things going on in the police department or whatever. He talks about policy changes that he's thinking about making or this or that. Then doing a citizen advisory board for all uses of force?
Doesn't mean any time you took someone down to arrest them.
Any use of force.
Any force, that's.
Any time you grabbed them, I mean, if you.
So if they're tense enough to be putting them on the hood of the car, that's use of force.
You have to review it. And no one, the consequences is going to lead the citizens to disagree with it. You know, they're not use of force experts. I don't know.
Yeah, there's a difference. What is the, you know, with the use of force guidelines? I mean, we've got all that.
Somebody would have to request it.
Put that request in right now?
Yeah, I'll break your fingers.
You just delete that email.
Yeah, what email? I do now, that I moved that three mics over and.
I couldn't hear.
You couldn't hear me? Well, according to.
Jeff said something about papers.
I heard Jeff say papers.
I wasn't messing with paper.
I can't hear most of the presenters very well.
They've been dropping off.
Yeah, and Ingrid was saying that it was because it would flip to me, so this, every time I would type. And so my typing would override their speaking.
Yeah.
And so then it would take away them, their ability to speak.
Makes sense. It's your fault.
Yeah, I won't even go with that except for, I don't know how to fix it. So this is my fix-it answer. You think that that's close enough to that?
Yeah. Before these two were. How weaponized is it? When there are councils with mayor and councilmembers are speaking, there's a big difference.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I was trying to figure out what.
All right, we're about at five minutes. So I was contemplating a wardrobe change, but I decided not to. Any rate, since five minutes have passed, let's see, who are we missing? Are we missing anyone? I think we're okay to go. So the next presentation we've got will be on a temporary waiver of a right-of-way use permit so that our city can help restaurants get back into business and recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. So really excited to hear about this one. Thank you.
So good evening. For the record, Ingrid Gao, Public Works Director. We're bringing tonight a discussion about ordinance 6778. And if the council would like to support it, then we plan to bring this forward for action on Monday, June 15. So with the approval by the Department of Health for King County to go into the modified Phase One, which allows some restaurants to open and allows them to serve indoor seating up to 25% of their occupancy as well as outdoor seating of up to 50% of their existing occupancy as long as social distancing requirements are met. It also allows them to add additional outdoor seating, again, as long as social distancing requirements can be met. So what we looked at as that was coming forward was how can we potentially help our businesses in Auburn that don't necessarily have private property available to them to be able to do additional outdoor seating? And most of that is in our downtown area along Main Street. And so we looked at opportunities for how can we allow them to utilize the wider sidewalk area as well as potentially parking strip area and the alleyways in order to give them a little bit more space to be able to put additional outdoor seating temporarily while we're in the current Phase One Modified and then potentially into Phase Two and Phase Three. And so what's before you tonight is the proposal to waive the non-refundable permit application fee. It's not a significant fee, but it is something that is costly for the businesses to do for a permit that would be a temporary permit and only last through, till we were at Phase Four, or until September 15th, whichever occurs first. And we chose September 15th because it gets the restaurants through the Saturday weekend as well as ends before we start actually getting some significant rainfall in the fall months when outdoor seating may not be as appropriate for the restaurants to do. So with that, if there are specific questions from council, I'm happy to answer.
I don't, I think we have any questions.
I see no questions.
But I think that's because everyone likes the idea.
Sorry, Councilmember Trump Manuel's raised his hand.
Sorry, I just have, I'm so excited to see this coming to us because I know our citizens are also pretty excited to be able to go back and open and get their business going. So I'm looking forward to seeing it come to us.
Yeah, I do want to add that the intent with the temporary permit is that it wouldn't necessarily be permanent improvements that we're putting in the right-of-way. So improvements like what you see in front of Go Brewing where it's wrought iron fence out in front of it, we're probably not going to see that level of improvement because the intent of this is to get them through the reopening period. We do have some comments that will go back to anybody who requests to do this, that if they do want to look at a permanent use of right-of-way for that seating, that there's a process they can go through to do that, but it would probably require some additional improvements. And really, it's kind of more the aesthetic improvements of how does that look? Right now, it's more about position where they can open and use that right-of-way safely in order to get more seating for their restaurant.
Councilmember Jay Rogers raised his hand.
Councilmember, you're muted.
Councilmember Jay Rogers, I believe you're muted.
It always happens to me. Okay, so my question is this. Do we have to deal with the Health Department regarding seating outside in the sidewalks or whatever?
We don't necessarily have to deal with the Health Department for that. It's really more of a use of the right-of-way and covering the city's liability for allowing that private use of public property and making sure that they have the insurance to cover the city as part of what happens through the permit process with the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey raised his hand.
Okay, thank you. Ingrid answered my question because I was going to ask the question about potentially future restaurants in the future asking to maintain that on the premises. So you can answer my question.
Councilmember Trump Manuel's raised his hand.
I'm not sure what you're saying. You have to mute yourself.
I said, I'm sorry, you answered the question, thank you.
Wow, great job. You're answering all the questions and more.
Great.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Great, so that you'll see this on the council agenda next week.
All right, yeah. Okay, so we're getting there. We've got a presentation from Dana H. B. on the distribution of the CARES Act funding.
That is correct. Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to our Economic Development Manager, Doug Link, to go over the specifics.
Thank you very much, Dana. Councilmember and councilman and mayor, thank you for giving us a few minutes tonight. As you outlined it at the heading at this ADA presentation for a possible resolution to come forward to you next week, if you fit, we wanted, we mentioned it last week and a couple weeks ago at our economic development update, what we're doing, and wanted to give you a little more detail on the program that you'll see in the resolution and your feedback and questions. So again, as the council member stated, this is how we're proposing that we would distribute a portion of the approximate 2.4 million that the city of Auburn is receiving through the CARES Act. Obviously, the money can be used for reimbursable costs to the city and a number of other things that we've taken in the beginning with. And after that vetting process, we determined that there's approximately $650,000 that we could make available to businesses to help them out if they've been impacted. The outline of the program would establish an initial distribution of $600,000 with a holdback of $50,000. The holdback would be for a round two if we identify a business after the fact that we missed them in some way or whatever, so that we would have a pool that we could go back and correct that missed business. The vetting of the process would be, for example, five or fewer employees, targeted businesses that were forced to close because of the C-19 shutdown, i.e. hairstylists, barbers, nail salons, those types of things. These are the businesses that didn't have an option at all to curbside pickup or something like that. So that's one of the criteria that we're going to be doing, that they would have an active business license in the city of Auburn. Businesses that we did remove would be rental businesses, removed nonprofits, we've removed unmanned businesses. That would be, for example, a Redbox rental machine sitting by Walgreens. They have to have a business license for that, but we don't want to send vending dollars. And we've also removed national chain brands. That would not be a franchisee, for example, but it would be a corporate, direct-owned type of store, that type of activity. Our estimate right now with the initial sorts that we've done of our business licensing, we're projecting that somewhere between 300 and 500 businesses would be eligible for this. And if that's, depending on where that number falls, we're anticipating that the individual payments to the businesses would be somewhere between $2,000 and $1,200 per business. We expect that we can get through the initial sorting of the businesses based on our data and business licensing, and then the businesses would be directly contacted initially through an email that we have on file for their business license. And those that don't respond, we'd make a direct, one-on-one, direct contact with the businesses to make them aware that we believe that they may qualify for this stimulus and that they'd be directed to a portal on the city's website for them to go in and answer a few basic questions, verifying that what we believe is true that they certify. And then they would have to also supply us with the necessary paperwork, the W-9 that we require from a vendor, no different we do every day. Finances then would process that check request once we've vetted their application and looked at the answers they've given us for that. And we're in the process of developing that web portal right now, so we'd be prepared to launch onto the street with this. If you move it forward to next week, to the 15th, maybe we would hit the street with it on the 16th of June. So our goal. So our, our goal is to move very quickly to get these dollars on the streets, and we think it's going to be a pretty big impact. We did, through our Safe Start Auburn Advisory Committee last Friday, we vetted the same information with them and to get their impact. I will tell you that we had out of the 15th, the sector represented, they all felt that this was going to be a definite impact on these, that size business here in town. So with that, I would take any of your questions.
Thanks, Doug. Actually, can you remind me, were there any specific criteria in the CAREERS Act itself as to what businesses are eligible?
No, there was not. They've left it up to a local jurisdiction. To give a little bit of guidelines, we went back and looked at the same information that the governor's office put out when they offered out the, I believe it ended up being $10 million that they distributed statewide. They gave us three, four things to look at to vet the companies. Size, was it a minority women owned? Was it a impacted business that had no choice but to shut down? I, you know, a lot of the little personal care types places, they just didn't have any choice in matter. And so, yeah, we did, you know, we, we looked through what the state put out. We looked at some stuff, criteria that King County has put out and is using. So we tried to, I think, stay very in agreement with what all the other cities are doing. I've personally been on numerous calls with six, seven of the cities here in the South King County area talking about criteria, what the other cities are going to do. And I would say that this criteria fits 99% of what everybody else is looking at. Better Way and Rantin and Duckhole and the rest.
Thank you.
Mayor Backus has raised her hand.
Thank you. Just also of note, there is roughly $113,000 that the King County Council has allocated out as council I sent to you probably three or four weeks ago now. We are hoping to hear from this, from them this week on what they are deeming eligible for that roughly $113,000 that's been allocated to Auburn. We are hoping that it can be utilized by businesses impacted by COVID-19. And then we will look at further being able to fund some of the businesses in our city. And as Doug mentioned, there will be focus on minority-owned businesses. Unfortunately, we do not have all of that information captured, nor is it captured at the state level on business licenses. And so we had discussion this morning about how do we begin capturing that data with business license renewal and on any new business license going forward so that we'll have more data on minority-owned businesses in the future.
Good, good.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
This is not a question. This is not a question. I'm going to, I'm going to play Bill Pelosi tonight. Look at the heading of, I don't know, in my print, it says City of Burn, Washington. Bill would have caught that right away. I don't know if all of you had that, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Is that on the agenda?
Yes. It's right there. I don't know if you can see it. And our page, it says City of Burn, Washington. The A U is missing.
We'll look for it. Did you catch that? I will tell you that the 20, 30 businesses every day that I interact with and, you know, most of them personally, a lot of them around town, this will be a real lifeline for them. I mean, if you look at what a lot of these little shops pay for rent or, you know, they depend on their cell phones or their internets or, you know, that $100 will really help them keep the lights on, point of phrase.
Thanks, Doug. You're right. That's so important still. If we don't have any more questions, I believe we'll go on to the final presentation, which I think Jeff is going to do about authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the E-City Gov Alliance.
So Councilman, if I can ask one last question.
Yeah.
With Resolution 5528, and if, am I to understand, then we're being in the direction to move it forward to your agenda next week?
I believe that's the, yes, so that would be correct.
Okay, I see a lot of head nodding there on the screen. So thank you very much. We'll see you next Monday.
Do we have a presentation left?
Yes. Last item on the agenda, and I promise to keep it quick. So what Resolution 5525 does is it would authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with E-City Gov Alliance for a service called MyBuildingPermit.com. First of all, E-City Gov Alliance is a collection of Washington State cities. Bellevue, Boppel, Urien Edmonds, Issaquah, Kenmore, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Mill Creek, Newcastle, Semamish, Snoqualmie, King County, and Snohomish County. What MyBuildingPermit.com is, is it's a uniform interface, a web portal for building customers to submit applications, to get their permits, to pay their fees, and a bunch of other things. So what it does is it sets up a standardized way for contractors to interface with the city's permit system. So the Master Builders Association has approached us and asked if we would be willing to consider enrolling in that service. They support it, and it's in your packet at the very last page in the packet, that CE should be adjusted to pay for the service, which does not incur CE and it becomes a net zero for the city. The contract has a $10,000 setup cost and about $64,000 a year for the service. So we would reflect our fees backwards, basically, and really have to do that for every year to make sure that ongoing service cost is covered and that the customer is paying for the convenience of being able to really learn one way of business instead of having, you figure that every city has its own permit process, its own system, its own way of doing things. It's a way of unifying that sort of convenience for the customer. So we don't expect there to be a budget impact. And our goal would be, if we could move the resolution forward and we keep it under contract, our goal would be to be around October 1st of this week.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? That's a good sign, I guess. We'll really appreciate your work on Jeff and look forward to what happens next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Deputy Council Mayor, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns, and thank you for filling in for Councilmember Brown. You did a very nice job for us this evening. So council, we're at our end. Any other discussion items? Okay, I just want to make one quick comment. As a matter of expediency, you know, regarding, I sent out an email for making motions. What I will be doing is I'll be contacting each of you before the next council meeting regarding motions for the, for the next council meeting. And I will do that until we get back in council chambers. So it helps to process it a little bit so everybody's aware of what we're asking them to do and to be prepared to make those motions at the council meetings. Any new business this evening?
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Hi, I'm not sure where the, I just wanted to make a comment on the march and rally. Just ask Tuesday if that's appropriate now.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, I, I just wanted to report that I was really impressed by the march and rally at City Hall last week. I was, I attended, my wife, my daughter, our youngest daughter, and it was really moving. And I'm just so impressed by, you know, the young people who organized and let it. And I was also really just so grateful for the Makawashe tribe for showing up. And I think when, you know, they helped lead it off with singing and drumming. Ekotika created a spirit that, you know, it was just a spirit of unity and peacefulness. And I'm really glad for all of that. And I also just wanted to say that I really thought that what the mayor had to say, you know, was she spoke from her heart, and it was really important to hear from her. And I just wanted to thank her for her powerful statement. And I'm looking forward to working with everyone on, you know, making Black Lives Matter here in Auburn and bringing interracial equity, really digging deep into our racial equity reform that we're going to be working on with our contractor. So I'm looking forward to all of that. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I would agree with you. And thank you to the city staff, all those who were involved in the preparations for that evening. Everybody did an admirable job. And as we, I think we, some of us mentioned in our videotaping sequence this week, definitely appreciate those who came to demonstrate and did it peacefully. And once again, Auburn kind of set the, set the pace in the region for how things are done. So we definitely appreciate what those folks did that evening and their voices were heard. So any other comments or questions?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, one quick note. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
No.
Deputy Mayor, can you hear me? So Deputy Mayor, can you hear me?
Good night, everybody.
Deputy Mayor, can you hear me? Deputy Mayor?
Donna, can I just speak?
Well, so.
The council meeting is over.
So Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, can you still hear me? Did he call the meeting adjourned?
He did.
Unfortunately.
I'm not sure. His screen is frozen now. Now he's gone.
Oh, now he's gone, yeah.
Unfortunately, he's adjourned the meeting, so we are unable to continue it.